To call this meeting in session, we have a full quorum. And I'd like to ask Jason to give the open prayer.
Dear God, we come to you today and ask that you bless our community. We ask that you bless this meeting, you've got to those entrusted and we want you to lead our community.
Bless those less fortunate in our community and give peace to those that struggle. We pray this in your blessed name. Amen.
Item three, the agenda is the motion to approve the agenda. Can I have someone to move for? On your favor?
Aye.
Item four, approval of regular meeting of council June 13, 2022. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the regular transmission in June 2022.
There is one correction that needs to be made.
Okay.
Item number seven, A, inspection of the Stonewall Mount Pleasant Road. That was actually the one in front of Dennis Hall on, what's the name of that street? Main Street? Yeah, of course, Main Street. And then down again, inspection of the Stonewall Mount Pleasant to be done. So we have kind of like the two things. Are they the same?
They will be excluded.
Okay. So that's an adjustment on the minutes?
So, anybody glad to add? Okay. So, any other question? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes. Anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? And then we have approval of minutes of closed-door meeting of the council, June 29. Any questions on that? I don't hear any questions. No questions, okay. So, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the closed-door meeting of council, June 29.
A second.
All in favor? Conflict of interest declarations. Anybody has a conflict of interest? No one has a conflict of interest? Jason, normally this thing goes on the very, very top, right? Conflict of interest after the approval?
Before we get into new business and stuff?
Oh, it's before you get into business, okay, okay. I mean, just so the approval may be of minutes, anyways. Item six in the agenda, delegations. We have Ms. Andur, Fundy Alumni Association, for an August event. Ms. Andur?
Just postpone that towards the end.
Okay, so maybe we can defer the item again and come back at the end when Ms. Andur comes back. Move on to general reports, general government report. Jason?
Thank you, worship. Canal Beach, just some updates on Canal Beach. The frame is up, waiting exterior walls, siding and roof and electrical work to start. Plumbing has already started. As a reminder, the tender will be put out for interest in using the canteen. So there's been no assignment of this new building. J O Spinning is part of our regional recreation cost sharing. Improvements continue on the basketball court, baseball field and some new equipment from McAdavick Center. Paving N R B, who was awarded the paving contract for St. George. It basically came over slightly over budget. It was $2,000 over out of the $505,000. So that's still fairly good. Most of that was just the overcost was within the apron at the Curling Club. There was a little bit more asphalt, as to be expected. So we do have the funds, though, to do that. Municipal designated highway, the town was approved on municipal designated highway for Mount Pleasant Road. Primary work to extend curb and storm drain and sidewalk to the DTI entrance. So where the sidewalk ends now, it will be extended to the DTI entrance. We met with engineers last week and I'll be moving ahead with this project. Road patches, we have perhaps one final asphalt day to, that will happen over the next week or so, finishing up some small patches and potholes. Ditching, some summer ditching is expected along Manor Road and sections of Masquerine Road. Development housing, complying, compiling a development agreement for Hillside Subdivision, which is in some of our new business today. Looking at a preliminary lot layout and drainage review of town properties off Brunswick Street. That's out towards Brunswick Court. Town is also working with the New Brunswick Nonprofit Housing Association, putting together some data on rentals and development land in town. Service Commission, the new housing reports for the, from this, from the Southwest Service Commission were released last week and available at SWB, SWNB-housing.ca. Quad and B proposal, staff is compiling a report for council on the proposed route and looking at municipalities where routes have been approved in the past. Walking trail construction has started on the coastal linked walkway trail on the old railroad path off Main Street. So the BIA funds, that was just an update that we received. We've received some garbage receptacles and benches, just awaiting on the planters. The goody, the groundwater under a direct influence study. So we have completed the work. The report is in a draft state. There are some items that were outlined to be, needed to be fixed under well three. So we're going to rectify those problems and then finalize the report and submit it to the province. Pickleball and tennis courts with approval from the province for $75,000 for the pickleball group. We've purchased some items and scheduling some work, especially the resurfacing work for the pickleball courts. So currently there are four and we'll go up to eight courts there. Community garden, kudos to Amanda Degucci Degrucci and volunteers on erecting the fence and the attention that they've given to the community garden this year. The St. Mark's First Community Cemetery, phase three restoration should start this month. That's the older Loyalist Cemetery off Main Street. Splash pad, staff is building maintenance schedules and a better understanding of the splash pad operations. Time capsule, the mayor and staff is working on costing and design overview of monuments and time capsule to commemorate the town's disincorporation. The wait continues, so we're still waiting on a number of different applications. One for industrial park expansion, water and sewage preliminary work. We're also waiting on a funding for Riverview, the water line and the updated quote on the lower bridge sewage line installation work. So memorial tree and bench program, the first participants in the program will have a tree placed in memory of Bruce Dunwoodie, the family Bruce Dunwoodie. And it's a fitting spot they've selected. There's a spot at the, what's called Dunwoodie Corner here in St. George. Bruce Dunwoodie passed away in February 2022. For many decades, he and his family lived at the large apartment building at the corner where it once stood. Some hiring, we did, we did complete one new member hiring full-time in the last month. Summer students have started as well and they're doing a good job. Delivery, dangerous and unsightly buildings, we have three open files, two which should be progressing further along, they're stalling out. And one property now is under watch. So there is a tax sale as well. Been advised of one property that is currently on the G and B list for tax sale. Eleven Portage scheduled for auction on July the 20th in St. John. As far as complaints in the last month, garbage, we've had some complaints on garbage at a apartment building. These locations are not on municipal pickup and they should be using their own garbage bins. And as well, cars speeding here at the McAdavick Center, we did open a file with the RCMP. That is the general government report.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? I have one question on that water study. How you call it?
The goody, yes, groundwater, yeah.
Goody, yes. What was the problem of the found?
The casing, the upper casing inside the wellhouse has corroded. So we need to rectify that, take the corrosion out of there, put a new cap, new wellhead on the top of that well.
Okay, okay. Did it do any, any ground sampling at all, like any, any water sampling as part of?
It was, yes, water sampling was done.
And that was clear?
Yes.
Okay. And this report has to be submitted to the government because I thought the requirement was not yet in place?
No, it's not. This was, this was more of a, sort of a pilot program. So we were sort of one of the first municipalities to go into this goody programming and that's why it was paid for.
So it's for bragging rights, basically?
Pretty much, yes. I mean, it will become perhaps a mandatory report. They'll have to be done so many years by municipalities operating water systems.
Okay. Any other question?
No.
For Canal Beach, for the canteen, when do we anticipate it to be completed?
We're three months behind at this point, so I would love to say the end of this month. There's a couple of things we're waiting on. The building itself will probably be done at the end of this month. So, yeah, I would suspect the end of this month, first of August. But they really wouldn't allow much time for anyone to set up, you know, an operation or anything this year.
Let's move on to the next item, seven B, an association for an update on the local government reform.
Yes, thank you, worship. Just updates on local government reform for Eastern Charlotte. C A O selection has been completed. The G and B reevaluated Eastern Charlotte based on now established boundaries. So we will have a population in Eastern Charlotte of 7,611 with a tax base of 624 million. So that was down, that was down about 54 million from the original projection of 678. So we are going through that, just trying to get an understanding of why there was such a decrease. Currently looking at LSD garbage collection contracts with the reform in Eastern Charlotte and their shares and house counts in LSD areas as well. Regards to Eastern Charlotte and fire services, no changes as of yet for fire boundaries or service areas remaining the same now. And we're just looking at the calculation of fire cost share for Eastern Charlotte. That's all I have for an update.
Questions? I just, just on the issue of the assessments, the original, the original figure was what?
678, so it's gone to 624.
From 624, okay. And the population is still the same as it was before, seven and a half?
Seven, 7,611.
So essentially there are $50 million worth of assessment of, roughly?
Right. There's a difference there of 54 million, so. Again, you know, they told us this was really an estimate at the time. But it's, when I look at other municipalities that are going through reform, we don't see a that large of a discrepancy. So we have asked for some further clarification on why there's such a large discrepancy.
And that discrepancy has significance with regards to the expected revenue?
It would, yes. Tax revenues based off of assessment, yeah.
So potentially that may be carried by someone at the end?
Well, it certainly, as far as budgeting, I mean, you would lose out on a possible revenue from your budgeting. So your tax revenue.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to fire report, sorry. So Chief, can you hold for a second because? Okay. I'll go back to the delegation. Ms. Andur is here and she wants to make a presentation on behalf of Fundy Alumni Association for an August event.
Hi. My name is Andur and I am from St. George. Hello, Andrew. How are you doing? And I have decided to, let's say April 15th, April the 20th, I checked out to see if my friends would like a party because of all that was going on on Facebook. And anyhow, I met up with a lot of people and they were all lonely and wanted something. So I decided to have an outdoor kitchen party. Came up, it was hard to find a place that was a big enough venue that would allow for people to socialize. It started out to be my first five years. Anyhow, I couldn't find a venue, so I went to Fundy High and I asked them if they would allow me to have a venue up there, an outdoor kitchen party. And they said, if you start an alumni. Not knowing how much foreign paperwork I was going to have to read, I said, can't be that bad. And we've always wanted one. I'm the first teacher to graduate from Fundy High also to retire from Fundy. So anyhow, I have started an alumni. Since then, since April the 20th, on June the 22nd, I had the alumni incorporated and I have an association and we're just finishing our bylaws and we've got them all written. We're just looking for a lawyer to make sure everything's all done and we're looking for an accountant. Desperately, I'd be surprised how many I've called. So anyhow, Fundy High is allowing us to have a party there. It's from noon till 10 o'clock at night. I have 18 different musicians, I have individuals, I have groups, I have duos. And they're playing for free. The money we're making, if you're under 10, you give money to the, you give a pair of chipper items to the food bank. 10 to 18 years old, $5. And 19 plus, $10. And we're starting to sell online tickets. I'm kind of messed up. I should have paid 15 and then online 10, but anyhow, that is in the state. And we're just looking for permission and some help, a little bit of everything. Any questions?
I have a question before I open the floor to the other councils. You mentioned that, you mentioned that for the, for the event, you have people who are under 10?
Yes, up until 5:15 and then we are clearing it out. Then at 5:45, 5:30 or 5:45, you don't decide on the exact hour, it will be 19 plus. And I'm ordering wristbands so that we can identify the people, so we don't have to argue with anyone. It's just a clear cut, you got your band on, great, you don't mind.
Out?
Yeah, goodbye. And we have privacy gates, which have been an awful challenge to build. And everything we're doing, everything so far, if you can come across something that's not working, it happens.
And physically, where are you planning to hold it?
At Fundy High.
The soccer field?
Yeah, no, we haven't had permission for the soccer field. So you're going to use the upper parking lot behind where the mechanical area is. And I'm using the bullpen as my beer guard, or I'm putting my liquor for the beer guard so no one can take the liquor out of there. And we're going to be serving it from there.
I'm going to open the questions to the council now. I'm going to start from the right side.
And also, we're having a market. I'm having a mammal reelie display and I'm having food stalls. And I'm having a silent auction to support the animal shelter. And I'm having activities for children. And I also have the priest from U M B, who is my host, who is an amazing piano player and an accomplished musician. And he is going to host the event. And we have a two hours and 15 minute open mic that is being run by my husband and Mike Chase. And the people on Mike's class also include Martha Barker, Claudette and Zeta Norman. Running out of time, Mark Steen, wait, Madeline Steen, a comedy comedian who's coming in several times throughout the day. Mark Taylor, Tom and Angela Banks. That's the first session. And we call it Eastern Charlotte Country. And that is the gospel and the country and that's just the downhill music. And then, open mic. And I've had, you know, the U Flayley group speaking will come in, different groups like that and some really nice singers. And then at 6 o'clock, we start with Fundy Rocks. And we have Jackie Burns, who is also in St. John Island. Mike, Nick and Nicole Constantino, Ross Lee, Joshua Osborne and Dr. Alec.
Brenda, have any questions? So. I have one question. The, I come, I come from a culture where people don't have problems with a 10-year-old being next to a person who has a beer. And sometimes on Sundays, I'll have a glass of wine when I was 10 years old. But there is some, some cultural concerns about, about having in the school an event like that. I heard them. So I just wonder, have you considered perhaps setting up the event in a place like here?
I tried to set it up here, but you wouldn't allow alcohol. I tried to set it up at the Curling Club and I have been, I have active participant of the Curling Club for 60 years. Like my mother, my parents were both like long. And the first time, they refused me and they refused me any rentals. And I've run plenty of events out of there. I ran curling events, I ran reunions, like I run parties for a couple hundred people every few years. And so I was offered Melena Dross's place. But then it just, when I got offered Fundy High, I thought, you know what? We need an alumni. And with Melena, I would have had to sit at the bar because I wanted to do it at the Curling Club. Because I thought they could make $10,000 in one day. Because then we wouldn't have had children, like we would have had it set up a little different. It was supposed to be, it's just to bring the community together. And that's why we're doing it at 5:45. Because if you know Mr. Fred Hare, he was the vice president, principal and principal of Fundy High. And he is the exact, the vice president. So he kind of is the one that makes sure that we follow protocol in the school. So anyhow, but otherwise, we would have gladly had it at the Curling Club and it would have been third or quarter of the hard work for me. Because the alumni has been huge for me to establish.
No, I appreciate it. I just, because who had in the past discussed within the council about, about potentially holding events like the one that you are describing and having a license to serve alcohol? And I have personally talked to the legion who has a license and potentially could have come here and provide the service?
I had booked the legion. Well, like I say, the Curling Club, that was my passion, right? Because I grew up and, you know, that's where you support your community. And I had asked about this place. And then Jason and I, when I came today, I started, I started communicating with Jason. Because I wanted in St. George. And the arena actually offered it for me down there, which would have been a lot easier and a lot cheaper and I wouldn't have had to do anything with a bar. Because, I mean, I don't even know. I used to run bars 30 years ago in university. And I didn't know that you have to buy, I didn't know how the whole system even worked. So, I mean, it's been quite a procedure. But yes, I would have preferred to have had it here or, like I say, the club. Well, I wanted it at the club.
Well, we appreciate that you chose St. George.
Well, I wanted it for St. George because being from St. George. When I first started the reunion, it was just for my class and for the, I did a Fundy first five. But the problem is, I'm two years before UCRS. Also, I can include, in this alumni, we have included Black Harbor High School, Back Bay High School, Deer Island Community School and St. George Superior School. So I've invited all the alumni in. Because when I asked one of the women to play, she said, Anne, I can't, I'm not part of Fundy High. And I thought, oh my gosh, your son went here, your grandfather's going there. How do you not consider yourself part of? So that's where this came from. Because I thought, well, we've got to make this a community event. And also, a couple of the kids spoke to me of loneliness and they were children. I would have never, they're 28 years old and 35. But I would have never thought of them as being lonely because they were some of the social kids I know, right? So that's why I picked St. George. And I hope next year, we're going to make it even bigger and better because.
Yes, no, St. George will not be here, but I appreciate that you chose St. George.
Yeah, well, it's a community thing. The only thing is, we got all the gardens up there, we've got to get some work done. You can only do so much. So I'm hoping more people will.
My only question, my only question is, what, is there, like, from that presentation, is there anything that you want the council to take and discuss or?
No, well, I mean, today, it's all coming out of my pocket. I have spent all the money for everything. But that's the way it goes, right? And I am not rich, but I have a father who's dying, so it's easier than worrying about that at all times.
Appreciate, I appreciate for coming and thank you for, for your.
Thank you very much. If you have money that you would like to contribute, even a couple thousand to help us get going.
That's a big number for you.
And or picnic tables or, I mean, also, I'm not going to have, I have people for traffic. I said to Jason, I'm going to be inside the building and, you know, well, inside my little perimeter. So traffic could be a problem. I have contacted the RCMP. But, I mean, there's a lot of legalities to take care of. So if the town would like to help us in any way, that would be great. But benches and picnic tables and things like that to help the hub. And we're not going to have a tent because I can't afford a tent rental. So I said, well, we're just going to pray and that's all you can do is just hope.
Can I ask you, you mentioned the RCMP.
Yes.
And I'm not familiar with the legalities of liquor licenses and traffic control and all that. Have you talked with someone from the RCMP about what they may require?
I have gone to the RCMP, I've talked to the fire marshal, I've hired security. I've gone through most of the steps. I check with Jason probably once a week and just to say, okay, what do you think of this? Can I go with, you know, and he'll say to me different things. And so we've had quite a little, quite the little adventure along the way. I've tried to cover as many stations as I can, yes.
I do have a question around the neighbors, the people that are kind of along that area.
said, Anne, I can't, I'm not part of Fundy High. And I thought, oh my gosh, your son went here, your grandfather's going there, how do you not consider yourself part of? So that's where this came from, because I thought, well, we've got to make this a community bit. And also, a couple of the kids spoke to me of loneliness, and they were children, I would have never, they're twenty-eight years old and thirty-five, but I would have never thought of them as being lonely, because they were some of the social kids I know, right? So that's why I picked St. George. And I hope next year, we're going to make it even bigger and better, because...
Yes, no, St. George will not be here, but I appreciate that you chose St. George.
Yeah, well, it's a community thing. But the only thing is, we got all the gardens up there, we've got to get some work done, but you can only do so much. So I'm hoping more people will...
My only question, my only question is, what, is there, like, from that presentation, is there anything that you want the council to take and discuss?
No, well, I mean, today, it's all coming out of my pocket. I have spent all the money for everything. But that's the way it goes, right? And I am not rich, but I have a father who's dying, so it's easier than worrying about that at all times.
Appreciate, I appreciate for coming, and thank you for your...
Thank you very much. If you have money that you would like to contribute, even a couple thousand to help us get going.
That's a big number for St. George.
And, or picnic tables, or, I mean, also, I'm not going to have, I haven't got people for traffic, I said to Jason, I'm going to be inside the building, and, you know, well, inside my little perimeter. So traffic could be a problem. I had contacted the RCMP. But, I mean, there's a lot of legalities to take care of. So if the town would like to help us in any way, that would be great. But benches and picnic tables and things like that to help the pub. And we're not going to have a tent, because I can't afford a tent rental. So I said, well, we're just going to pray, and that's all you can do, is just hope.
Can I ask you, you mentioned the RCMP?
Yes.
And I'm not familiar with the legalities of liquor licenses and traffic control and all that. Have you talked with someone from the RCMP about what they may require?
I have gone to the RCMP, I've talked to the fire marshal, I've hired security, I've gone through most of the steps. I checked with Jason probably once a week, and just to say, okay, what do you think of this? Can I go with, you know, and he'll say to me different things. And so we've had quite a little, quite the little adventure along the way. So I've tried to cover as many stations as I can, yes.
I do have a question around the neighbors, the people that are kind of along that area.
We're going acoustic...
Okay, so that means like no mics?
No, it means it won't be loud, like, it's not going to be really, they're keeping it as less, as less complicated as possible. And the shut-off time is ten o'clock.
But that doesn't necessarily mean people will be, like, leaving at ten, would it? Is that what your, is that what your expectations are?
No, I'm hoping they'll be over there by eleven, I'm kicking them out at ten, we're starting the music at ten. But I mean, it's like the fireworks in town. I mean, are they going to be over there by eleven? No, it just depends. That's why I've got my security hired for that time.
So you have security?
Yeah.
You have security.
Oh yeah, I've gone through all the steps, yeah. And if I've missed a step, it's not because I haven't tried, it's because I did not know about it. So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And have a nice evening, folks. Oh, also, the other class from Pete's, we'd like to put our sign up, and we'd like to put some signs up around town. Do you know the bulletin board? There's nothing in there. There's only two little things, or three, but I got a bigger poster...
Can you leave that to the new one, just after?
Sure. Thank you very much.
What's the date again?
August the thirteenth. And I did check with all the municipalities around here and everything before I went very far with it as well. So there wouldn't be a conflict, because I wanted something that people could feel like they could come home. There is a ten-year reunion and a twenty-year reunion that has been decided, and the dates were decided because of that. And as many people know, many reunions don't get planned around here, because there's not many people that have the energy to do it. So a lot of years. So hopefully, this will bring our people home.
Thank you. Thank you for choosing St. George.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Right. So we move, we move back to the fire. Fire chief.
All right, short report this month, I think, I remember everything that's in. I think I can do it, but I would actually, but we'll take it, just a big short. Yeah, we had a couple of car accidents, which is normal, one structure fire, the garage burnt. We managed to save the house, thankfully, it was a close call, but we did save the house. And one call for someone that thought they might have had a carbon dioxide issue, so we looked at that. Also, we had one firefighter that completed his first aid certification. Nothing really to report that I can think of with regards to equipment. And I guess the biggest thing we're doing right now is trying to get ready for the fireworks show, which will be at ten. Typically, it would be about eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, before all the vehicles are similar shows what we've had in the past, from what I'm told. So hopefully, everybody can get out, and we're going to be ready for a nice night as well, because we don't have to take tents for that either. And a lot of work will be done. We start, just for the record, we would start on Friday, assembling that work all day Saturday, sat it off Saturday night, and then clean up on Sunday. So it's a, it's a twofold day event for the firefighters and those that are involved to put that together and make it work. And hopefully, we'll get all of our legal stuff mixed up, sweeping out of that, and actually remind them, I've got some paperwork I've got to sign. So all's good. Any questions, or anything?
Just want to thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah, as now.
It will.
We're doing our best.
It will.
Two small questions. The first one is carbon monoxide. That was a, can you elaborate a bit more?
What's that?
The carbon monoxide?
Oh, carbon, no, just somebody had, was having some health-related issues, and they couldn't figure out what it was, and they thought it might have been carbon monoxide poisoning, so I took care, and sure.
So it was a spurious, spurious...
Yeah, yeah.
The second one, which is a bit more tricky question, is, are you at all involved in the discussions of the, what's going to happen with the fire service come January?
Not yet.
Not yet? That's a difficult question, but I just wonder if you have started getting involved?
We talk amongst ourselves, but we've never been invited to talk to anybody official, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Building and planning report. Alexander.
Jason covered a lot of it in his general report. Few more things, we do have a draft of, it shouldn't be by law number eighty-eight, I think it should be twenty-four C, which is the new municipal plan. And I believe there's an agenda item for that tonight, if council wants to move ahead with it. We did the public hearing for fifteen Carlton and ten School Street for that apartment building there. And CRAC did give their reason in favor of it, so I think probably tonight, there's definitely a third reading of that one as well. CRAC has recommended the layout and land for public purposes in the hillside estate subdivision, so council can proceed with the formal consent, subject to subdivision agreement. And CRAC also has approved private access for a one-lot subdivision off of, at forty-four Rodeo Avenue. Council can accept cash and lieu for the land for public purposes and to subdivision agreement, just like the hillside. In terms of development, they're having a twelve-building or development permit issued to date in 2022, and the value of that is five hundred eighty-five thousand. There was a building permit application rejected at three Harborview Heights Road due to non-conformity with municipal zoning and building bylaws, as well as provincial building regulations. And Jason mentioned the housing reports that we have now, and I'll just give a little highlight on St. George from those. We do have vacancy rates and market, sort of average market rent. So St. George, this was, this was done in March of this year, so it's always a snapshot of time, but at that time, there was a 1.4% vacancy rate in St. George, which is very, very low. That would be just one or two apartments available. And the average rent in St. George is seven hundred and sixty dollars a month, which, with the maximum rent of those who were surveyed, at nine hundred and fifty dollars. So there's a whole report on SWNB-housing.ca. We should be putting out some more bite-sized infographics on housing situations in various municipalities in the region over the next few days. So that's, that's it. And I know there's some other stuff, but if there's any questions, generally, I'll do my best to answer.
Questions? Questions from there? I have two questions.
Yeah.
The first one, can you, can you elaborate a bit on the, the one housing application that was rejected?
So I don't know a ton about it, and generally, I mean, we don't get into a huge amount of details on individual applications, but...
Don't really know who was and all that, but I just, we were in a situation where we are crying for housing.
Right. So this was a, this would have been one house, not, not an apartment building or anything like that.
Yeah, and that's a very important thing, because St. George is a town that has houses, not apartments, not typical, yeah. So what happened to that house?
So I think initially, they, they wanted to build a shed before they built any house.
Oh, that's a...
And, yeah, so, and that's, there is an allowance for that in the zoning bylaw. You can do it if you're going to build the main building within a year. You have to submit your building permit for all of it. And we, we advised the applicant to do that, and, and they didn't really want to do that, and, and then they sort of went ahead and did some things anyways, and, and then after the fact day, I think applied, Jason might know a little bit more, but...
No, 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 I understand. But essentially, if you don't have a housing permit application rejected, you had, you had a garage application?
Yeah, we know, I don't think we ever actually got an application to build a house.
Yeah, okay. No, that's it. Thank you, thank you. Okay, water and wastewater report. Jason.
Thank you, worship. Water and wastewater report for the month of June. The average daily water consumption for June was two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and fifty-three imperial gallons, for a total of eight million one hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred imperial gallons year-to-date. Well levels are remaining good so far. Regular water testing has been clear for all test points so far this year, with no bacteria issues. Seven water samples were received on June the twenty-eighth for microbiology testing. The identity of the samples and results have been, have been provided to council. Work number two, work, well number two work has been completed. A couple of electrical issues with the pump controls were sorted out with the help of ShadCom, and everything should be good now. We are just waiting for the results of bacteria levels, so we can put the well back into service, and those have been all received and cleared. We have two leaks to address, and the well we finished landscaping is done, grass seed has been put down, and the interior of the building will be addressed moving forward, as it needs some cleaning and walls and floors painted. Well three has had an issue with the well casting that was mentioned earlier in my report, that the protrudes, protrudes through the floor, in that it has deteriorated, it has a hole in its sleeve, so the well casing has a, has basically a hole on the side of it. Steve's well drilling has been in contact regarding repairing the problem, but we have not heard back from them as of yet. Temporary repair has been applied to the casting to keep anything from getting into the well. The water at the community garden has been turned on for the season. We had another lift shift, lift station pump sent away for repair. Pump number two from SLS number six had stopped working, so it was tested by electrician, and the motor was bad. We had a, a pumping, we had A1 pumping in to remove it, and the debris in the manhole after the paving was done around town. Marsh Lane was the worst of all, the, of all, and the places paving had been done, places that paved had been done. We had to shut the water off at the high school temporarily, so maintenance crews could check valves on the property. Also included in the report is the results for lagoon testing, influent, effluent for the month of June. That's the report.
Thank you. The insulation job for the pipe, how is it going?
We haven't received anything back for the updated quote for the hangers. We're still waiting for, for estimates from the contractor, so...
That's now...
It's now been a couple of months, exactly, yes.
At least, at least two months, yes.
Yeah. Busy season, small organization, so unfortunately, they're just not responding. So, you know, much like some other contract companies that we work with, it gets around this time of the year, things just get busy, and they're out in the field a little bit more, so... We would have liked to have had that completed before spring, that way there, we could have got them on the, the schedule, so... And we haven't given up, we're still, you know, trying to reach out to them even as early as today.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just concerned about, because right now, presumably, they know what they have to quote, right, they have done, so the question is, is their pricing went up or something like that?
Exactly.
So that's what has been straightforward for them to... That's, yeah. Okay, thank you. Transportation report.
Thank you, worship. Transportation report for the month of June, submitted by Ron Groom, acting foreman. Mowing and trimming has ramped up with the warmer weather. Garbage collection has become more frequent with the summer weather. Some of the old steel cans have been replaced as they deteriorated, and new decorative ones were added to Main Street. Those are the BIA ones. We have a number of streets milled in New Asheville, laid down, Birch Lane, Carlton Street, Marsh Lane, Kennedy Court, Hillcrest Drive, were all done, as well as the Bad Spot in front of the Independent Grocer, and a section on Brunswick Street before the seniors complex there. We have also done patchwork on a number of streets to fill in cracks, holes in low spots. Flail mower was installed on the trackless, so we can start mowing the areas that are regularly mowed and cannot be accessed by a lawnmower. Baco was used to backdrag some of the high spots down on the roads inside the cemetery. The flags were put out on the buildings of Main Street for the summer. The crew renewed their traffic control certification. Flowers were put in, on the poles along Main Street, and watering has begun. Splash pad was turned on for the summer operation. One feature was inoperable due to a broken part on the plumbing inside. Replacement parts were ordered and are covered under warranty. Regular flushing of the filter system and cleaning of the screens will be done every couple of days through the summer on the splash pad. Routine vehicle service has been done on a couple of the trucks. New tires were installed on the truck number one at Carson's in St. Stephen. A new, new brakes were installed on truck number five. We rented the bucket truck from Look and Tell Auto to put the graduate banners up as well. A pothole auger was rented for the community garden, so fences could be installed to keep the deer out. A new boat trailer, a boat trailer vehicle parking sign was installed at the property at Canal, so that the beach road does not become congested with truck and trailer traffic. Ball Diamond Medical Center has been drug for use. A broken attraction at the Kent Street Playground was removed, and repairs are on hold, so basic repairs on order. A new basketball nets were installed at the court. Canal Beach has reopened for the season. The school's own warning lights have been turned off for the summer. The old flagpoles on the lawns at the Adventure Center were taken down, and the old ones put in storage. A new full-time works employees was hired, and training has, has been ongoing with him. Summer work student has started, and the work duties are being sorted out. Repairs are made to the pressure washer at the works department, and new park benches were assembled in the workshop to be placed most on Main Street as part of the BIA funding. That's the transportation report.
One correction. Hillcrest Drive wasn't the, it was Armstrong Crescent.
Yes.
Any other question?
I have a question around the, the entrance of the subdivision, Hillcrest subdivision. There's that broken piece of pavement there. I'm wondering, what's the timeline of getting it finally repaired?
Um, well, now that we're, we're good with staffing, we'll probably be doing that by the end of the summer. We've just been trying to look for, look for an opening with our scheduling. So it's eight to ten feet down, so it does require a skilled workforce that can do that type of work. We may have to outsource that, just because of the depth. So, you know, we are forecasting this to be done by the end of summer.
I don't understand, eight to ten feet down, you have to dig it all out, you mean?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, is it still leaking?
No, it's, but there was signs of corrosion when we opened it, we just couldn't...
Because you have to, so you have to replace?
Right.
Okay. Do we have the parts to replace that?
It's just piping, yeah. Yeah. Couldn't do it at the time, due to the, the ground being saturated, and, you know, to shore up the, the shoulders.
I have a question which splits between this topic and the one that we just discussed on the municipal restructuring. Garbage collection, our contract ends, our formal contract with St. George?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yep.
So it ends in a year and a half, roughly?
Correct, yeah.
A year and a half. So moving on to the restructuring, we are still bound, or the, the residents are still bound by the old contract?
Correct.
Now, the discussions that you are having for the new entity, how they approach garbage collection?
As of right now, it's a matter of just, sort of a household count, and then being able to say, you know, say, for example, in the LSD, not so much Fundy Bay, because it's the whole LSD, but, for example, the LSD of St. Patrick, you know, how many houses are on, on the Eastern Charlotte portion of garbage collection? So how would we break that current contract up for costing? So that's where we're at now with garbage collection. So they, they themselves, the LSDs, will be into probably a, you know, two- or three-year contract at that point, when we come on board, so it won't be, Eastern Charlotte itself is one large entity, won't, won't probably be putting out for a tender for a full garbage collection, probably not until twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
The LSDs right now have individual contracts for garbage collection, or it's done through their, through the provincial government?
It's through the provincial government.
So it's a, it's a wholesale negotiation from the provincial government for these LSDs?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Okay. Going, uh, moving on to, um, item eight, bills paid and payable in principle to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Questions? That was very, that was very unusual. That was very unusual. Okay, uh, good job, Jason. Oh, you have one, okay.
I just, I just a little clarity around the Easterbrooks engineering for the lower bridge scaffolding. Is that over and above what we've already paid?
Um, that would be over and above what we're, the quote that we're waiting for, right? So, you know, unfortunately, we had to go to the province for their, for their approval. They asked us to give an engineering drawings, provide the engineering drawings. They were satisfied, uh, because we were going to close the bridge anyways. Uh, they were more, had more of an issue that the staging with traffic would exceed the capacity of the bridge, um, so we had to have everything engineered. We get to the point where, um, even with the scaffolding and traffic, there was no, no capacity issues, but then the question was, can we just close it to traffic? And it was yes. So it was really a fruitless effort of having to go through an engineer to get an engineer stamp drawings, uh, when really we just closed the bridge, so.
But, and this was contingent, this, this, this engineer report, report was contingent on whether or not we could move forward and get the insulating done.
Correct.
So, in reality, we didn't even need it.
Correct.
Cause all we had to do was close the bridge.
Right.
Um, the porta potty for the tennis. Now, my question around that money, is, is it just for the whole summer or is that monthly?
Um, it's done, it's billed monthly, porta potties, yeah.
Okay, so that would be like for three months then?
Yes, three months, yeah.
Okay. Um, the, the chloride that we're buying for, from Boyd Brothers, that would be the pool stuff for the splash pad?
Yes.
Is that adequate enough to care, to take care of all the issues that might come with little people?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We will be doing, I, I suspect likely next month, we'll be starting to do, um, more formalized water testing of both splash pad and, and Canal Beach.
Uh huh.
Um, it's something that's not really done at this point for Canal Beach, but something we've asked the province to sort of, um, you know, assist us with as a public beach. It's one of only two public beaches in Southern, in this area of New Brunswick, so, uh, we will be doing water testing of both, both the splash pad and Canal Beach to ensure that there's no bacteria levels, but, uh, the splash pad is pretty, you know, it's pretty, you know, up to date with technology. We can, we can monitor how much chlorine is going in, so.
Uh, this is a question for Councilor Colton around the teddy bears.
It's, don't worry, I asked Jason that question earlier because there were several entries. It's the line of coding and how it's coded in one line, put in another, but.
But people are paying for these bears.
Paying for a portion of them.
I see, okay, yeah, all right then, just, just.
Yes, it's, it's, they're more expensive than what we're charging people. The town's paying for a portion, people are paying for a portion, but I too had a heart attack when I looked at all these different figures and then I thought, oh, right.
Okay.
My limited. Uh, knowledge of accounting said, okay, that's coded in here and that's brought over there.
Sometimes it's just about clarity.
So just to clarify, the town is subsidizing, subsidizing the mayor's teddy bear.
If you say so.
Okay, any other question? Yeah, okay. So I need a, a motion, um, to, uh, to approve this, um, bills paid and payable in principle to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and nine and fifty-seven cents.
One second.
No, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, this is the season, the auditing season, right, or auditor season, right? So, so, uh, the, the next item is, uh, is a presentation by Andrew Logan and Keith Walker of Teed Saunders Doyle of the twenty twenty-one financial audit. The floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, my name's Andrew Logan. I am, uh, with the accounting firm of Teed Saunders Doyle and, uh, tonight I have Megan Porter with me. Megan is the manager who's responsible for conducting the audit here at the town of St. George. And how many years now?
Three.
Three or four. Uh, Megan also looks after several other municipalities in Charlotte County, so has quite a lot of expertise in auditing, uh, this type of entity. So tonight's presentation is going to be relatively compact. Your financial statements are very long. Uh, I think, um, Jason sent them out to you last week, so hopefully you had an opportunity to look through them. Uh, we'll do our very best to answer any questions you have on these, but I did want to take a few minutes and just address what it is that we do, uh, in, in the course of our audit. So as an outside accounting firm, our job is to review and examine the financial statements that are prepared by essentially council that downloads that job to various people within the organization. Our job is to make sure that two things primarily, one is that the numbers that are contained in the financial statements are accurate, materially accurate, and two, that these financial statements have been prepared in accordance with the proper accounting rules. So there are national standards that all municipalities in New Brunswick must follow, uh, and it's one of the reasons why these financial statements tend to grow and grow each year as new standards are published and issued. But, but our job, based on our work, based on our, our procedures, um, is to, is to provide an opinion as to whether or not these statements are accurate and true and correctly, uh, prepared with the appropriate standards. So our audit work starts in, uh, this year, we started in May, which is a little later than usual. Um, normally we'd be doing this work in March timeframe most years. Uh, we send an audit team down to the town hall and, um, between, uh, the staff there and, uh, Mr. Mark Porter, who you've hired to help, uh, we conduct our procedures. And one of the procedures are things around transactional testing, um, verifying payroll amounts, verifying receipts that have been received, uh, substantiating asset and liability balances to make sure there's proper cutoff, comparing all of these items to your budget and to your plans and reviewing and cooperating with council minutes and other documents that we deem necessary. Part of our work also is to assess the financial systems and accounting policies that you have in place to make sure we see no, no gaping errors or issues. Uh, if there are opportunities for improvement, uh, we will suggest those and generally to assess, uh, uh, the general wellness of the accounting function. So this year, um, we conducted our audit, as I mentioned. Uh, we found, uh, no issues or errors in any of the evidence that we reviewed, um, and that allows us to publish what we call a clean audit opinion. It means, uh, the statements are accurate and true materially and that they're prepared in accordance with the proper accounting standards and rules. Um, as a side note, uh, and I've, I think in my last presentation, I, I may have made these comments, uh, it's obvious to us that the town takes, um, places a lot of importance on the accounting function and the finance function in particular. Um, hiring outside expertise like Mr. Porter, for example, um, shows us that that's an important aspect of, of, of your governance responsibilities as town council. Um, we found no issues this year, as I mentioned. We found no mistakes that required adjustment and that's pretty important. Quite often when we audit, uh, an entity, as auditors, if we find an error or an issue, we'll tell them that they need to change figures within their financial statements. Uh, we found none of that here, uh, and that means the financial information that you receive during the year is accurate, um, complete, and it's allowing you to make good financing decisions as you roll through your fiscal year. Uh, we had some minor discussions around some, some improvements to the accounting system. Really, it, it was around documentation and procedural things on payroll, reviews and processes, very minor. Um, generally speaking, um, the, the town's control systems in the accounting and, and finance department are, are very good. Um, you know, and you, we assess that based on the resources you have available, which are limited, um, as you know. Uh, you know, unfortunately, the province doesn't always, uh, place as much importance in the funding model as they should, and, you know, we find this not only in towns, but in healthcare and other, you know, education systems as well. Um, but by re-diverting funds and by placing it up financially, uh, your systems are, are well-maintained and well-controlled. As I mentioned, we're, we're publishing and issuing a clean audit opinion. Uh, in terms of the financial results for last year, uh, it was a positive financial year for the town. Uh, there were some unexpected revenues that, that materialized last year, some related to COVID, some related to the, uh, the pandemic sort of easing away. Uh, we note, uh, there was some capital funding received last year, significant capital funding that was reinvested in town, infrastructure and capital projects. Uh, and overall, from an accounting standpoint, there was a surplus of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That was significantly more than planned, but as I mentioned, there was some significant changes in revenue, unanticipated, and expenses were down about a hundred and forty thousand over budget. And that's, uh, a function, I think, of, uh, less fires, um, maybe a little less, uh, a, a, a less sand and salt required during the winter months and overall, just across a broad range of, of expense categories, uh, less being spent. I will note, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in expenses, uh, is not, uh, while the, the number's large, the budget here is almost, uh, four million dollars, so it's a large operation and, and to have all the expense categories and most categories down below budget speaks again to the, uh, good financial management, uh, good monitoring of budget to actual expenditures during the year. I also note that the, the town's, uh, state in a financial position, which is a measure of financial health, assets, liabilities improved last year, and that's a function of having a surplus. I mean, you have surpluses, um, your financial health generally improves and it did once again last year. Your net debt number, uh, dropped from one point five million down to nine hundred thousand, so another important financial indicator. The town reinvested about six hundred thousand in infrastructure into capital assets last year in a variety of projects, uh, and about three hundred and ninety thousand of that was funded through special programming, either through the province or the federal government. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about variances. Um, I think it's important, I mentioned it a few minutes ago in my presentation, that we made no adjustments to the financial information that you would have already seen. So these are the, these are the numbers that have been produced through Jason's office, through, through Mr. Porter and, and the other, uh, folks who help out in the accounting and finance function, um, and they are, they have not changed from what was from before. That's really all I'd like to say. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm really happy with what you told us about, how well we are managing, uh, but I, I, I wanted to ask you, uh, if I can, I, I, I want to ask you if, um, if there is any, any particular, um, um, issue that, um, that in, in, in your review of our, our books, um, that, um, uh, may, uh, should be a consideration for this council as it is setting the books for, for eternity, whatever you want to call it, where essentially a council dissolution. So I was just wondering if there is any, any, anything specific that we should be taking from there that we should be using for the next four months?
It's a good question and I, I was, on the drive down tonight, I was thinking about the transition that's coming down the road and how, uh, financially, um, you know, you, you asked the fire chief about the fire department. Well, the finance department has a lot of issues before it, uh, in terms of integrating all of these entities and all, integrating all of the financial information that, and systems and processes, and that's a, a very large job. But I think in terms of the short term, uh, what council can take away from these financial statements, um, is a, as I, as I said, last year was financially was, was a very positive year. Um, you know, some of that is not always under your control. Um, you know, if the government decides to give money for COVID relief or capital expenditures, you can't always plan on that, but it was well-spent and the financial statement in the financial balance sheet has improved. So you're leaving this municipal entity in very good financial shape as you move into the next phase of, of local governance.
Make sure you record that. Thank you. Any, any question for the auditor?
No answer to my questions around, uh.
Well, thank you very much. I, this is the second year I, I, I became to and I, I appreciate your good work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Worship, we just, we need a motion, council to accept the.
To accept all, to accept all.
Just accept the financial statements, yeah.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the report.
I'll second it.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we are moving on to, um, item nine B, bylaw, um, twenty-five B, twenty, twenty, twenty-two oh-three, um, and as, and amendment of the zoning bylaw, uh, twenty-five B. Jason, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Um, so we did receive back, um, a, a letter from the Prac Chair Sam Walsh, uh, in regards to twenty-five dash B, two, uh, two-two oh-three. This is an amendment to the zoning bylaw. So I'm writing to, to you to provide you a written review on the proposal of bylaw twenty-five dash B, two-two oh-three, bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of St. George. This is a bylaw to rezone properties on school and Carlton Street, uh, pit numbers, uh, from R two residential mix to R three multi-unit mix or multi-unit residential, uh, to accommodate a new eight-unit apartment building development. The, uh, the Prac of the Southwest Service Commission met on Thursday, July, or June the sixteenth to discuss this matter. Our committee recommend, is recommending that council proceed with approving the proposed rezoning bylaw.
So that means that, um, we are in the process of actually, uh, going through the first reading?
That's correct. So we would be, uh, under, uh, under nine C, would just be the, uh, third and final reading.
First reading, yes.
Basically the enactment.
Any questions? Good, so, um, I don't have a question. Um, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to amend the zoning bylaw twenty-five dash B.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, item nine D, update on Hillside, sorry?
C.
Oh, yes, I just, yeah, 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 okay, yes, you're right. They're all twenty-five B, eh? Yeah, C, okay. Uh, resolution of council on third and final reading by title, right? Twenty-five B, twenty-two oh-three. That is exactly what Brenda said, right? So, so, yeah, so who, the final reading, so we have to actually go to another reading?
We, we just accepted that through a motion, so.
Yeah, we said, yeah.
So that would be the, that would be the bylaw, the third and final reading of bylaw twenty-five dash B, uh, twenty-two two oh-three.
So, right. Um, so we move to nine D, which is update on Hillside subdivision development. Jason, you gonna handle it?
Thank you, worship. Um, so, uh, we also received, uh, from the Prac as well, uh, it's, uh, regards to the Hillside Estate subdivision, um, from Chair, uh, Prac Chair Sam Walsh. Uh, council, I am writing to you to provide written reviews on the Hillside Estate subdivision. This is a large residential subdivision proposal involving new, uh, municipal facilities, including public streets and land for public purposes off Main Street, pits included. The, uh, the Prac of Southwest Service Commission, uh, has met on Thursday, June the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to consider the following elements of this proposal. One, the topography of the land, uh, two, the provision of lots suitable for tenant use, three, the street's intersection and intersections being as nearly as possible as right ankles, uh, for the convenient access, uh, to the proposed subdivision and to lots within and. and to lots within; and five, the convenient further subdividing of land in adjoining land. Following this consideration, our committee is recommending that council proceed with the next steps of approving the proposed subdivision, and the committee has no objections to the proposal as is..."
So I can understand. I thought that this went through the Service Commission, so right now it comes back to us for what purpose?
So we would have to accept the subdivision plan at this point. And I'll just bring into this as well, we did receive back reviews from CBCL Engineering as well. So they did look at drainage, they looked at the overall design of the layout of the subdivision, and they had no issues with that. They've just outlined a few things with, just regards to background studies on the storm drainage, sanitary sewer, and the water systems as well for Hillside subdivision. So at this point, what we would need to do is, I guess I'm looking for Alexander on this, but we'd have to have a incentive council to move it to a development agreement, to move to that phase of the subdivision. So we have, we've been given the outline of infrastructure of public streets and a lands for public use, LPP. So we would then have to enter a subdivision agreement that complies with the subdivision bylaw. So we'd be looking for a motion of council to accept the plan as it is, then we would then move into the developer, we'd draft up a development agreement with them.
Essentially, this is to authorize you to negotiate with the developer?
Correct.
An agreement for development of the subdivision?
Right, right.
So that is the purpose of this item, actually?
Yes, and any development draft would have to come back to council as well, would be shared with council as well.
Essentially, if there are no questions, you have a question?
No.
Just so I know what we are voting. We are voting to essentially authorize or direct Jason to proceed with the development or the negotiation of the development plan for this subdivision, which has been approved by the Service Commission, by the Prac. So...
I'd like a little clarity on the word, this is exactly?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Hillside Estates, so this would be out towards Main Street, near the booster station between, yeah.
Jason Smith. Did we answer the question? Do you have a question on the... Okay, okay, okay. So someone moved for this, can I have a second?
To accept the plan and submit it for the Hillside subdivision.
And authorize Jason to actually proceed with the negotiating the development agreement. So have it moved to a seconded?
I'll second it.
Seconded? On your favor? So we are moving to item E. Jason, can you please introduce it, please?
So E is introduction of subdivision of lots for 112 Mount Pleasant, lot owning, being owned by Charlie Avery. And it's, we're looking at a couple of things that happened there, a municipal plan amendment for a small residential subdivision, and setting a date of a public presentation. And Alexander, I think you want to add anything to that?
We got an application from Mr. Avery. He owns PID 15188352, which is, I think it's the last property in town on Mount Pleasant on the south side. And he ultimately wants to basically subdivide three lots just off the front of that and keep most of the lot still as agricultural. But because the municipal plan map says it's all agricultural, in order to do the rezoning, we have to do a municipal plan amendment, and the first step of that is a public presentation. So it's basically a rezoning, but we have to do this extra step because of the municipal plan map. And just on, you know, we look at the municipal plan policies and things like that, and because he wants to keep the majority of the lot as agriculture, we think it makes sense. It's basically the minimum amount that is needed for the residential portion on the front where the road is would be changed to residential, and the rest would stay as agricultural. So if council wants to move ahead with the public presentation, there's still, the rezoning that has to happen still via the Prac, still public hearing, so it's a very preliminary step in the process.
I have a question.
Yeah?
I know that the neighbor there has his roosters at about 20-foot distance from these houses, and I know that the neighbor is quite insistent on assistance. I mean, he supports the agricultural use of this land. In fact, right now, it is used as agriculture, it is a hay field. And the other thing which I noticed is the density that he's proposing for that subdivision is not only unusual for essentially an incursion on agricultural land, but even by St. George standards, at the very, very, very high dense, 60-foot lots.
It's the minimum size of lots, you mean?
It's the minimum, yes, that's what I'm saying. So normally, there is an average and a minimum. So here is a proposal to introduce a subdivision on farmland next to an existing farmer who's actually having animals, and bring houses next to the animals in a high-density configuration. And we are just in the process of actually passing on a municipal plan update in which we talk about the importance of maintaining the nature of this area.
So, we'll get there in a minute, but you actually look at the municipal plan map that we're proposing, portions right along the road?
Yes.
Like, this would be, would be residential, because the idea is if you have fronting portions on the road, that makes it very desirable for residential development, because you can access it straight from the road. But really importantly is that you keep all the portion behind it staying as agriculture, so you still have that land use, you're not subdividing it, so it can't be used agriculturally in the future. So in my opinion, this would actually be in line with what we're proposing for the municipal plan, but it is, it's entirely up to council. If you don't want to move ahead with it, that's totally up to council.
Can I ask you, in order for that to go through Prac, it has to go, have the green light from us?
Yeah, it won't go to Prac unless you, you would need to do a first reading of a rezoning bylaw before it would go to Prac, and we're not even there yet. This is very, very preliminary.
Well, should we have the gentleman to come and explain to us?
Yeah, so that would happen.
I'll tell you what, just a month ago, I had the same discussion with our CEO, and at that time, I spoke to the neighbor who has the roosters. And at that time, he was informed by the new owner, because this is a person who just bought the property, that essentially he was looking to set up a homesteading operation, which could have been very, very in line with what the neighbor has and all that. Now, this is a different thing. This is like a proposal, it's not like putting like one lot in front of her house, and then on the back, the guy is proposing... Can I ask you, what's the frontage of this lot?
I think it's...
291?
291.
291.
It is 291 feet, okay? And so he has meant...
Yeah, so it would be with 180 residential.
And can I ask you, the 50-foot drive that he proposes is the standard for a road?
It's quite a bit wider than a road would need to be.
Quite for a road, okay? So, I mean, if his intent was, for example, to actually maintain the back as a farm access, he could have made the lots a bit bigger, right?
I think, I mean, I assumed his intent was keep the lots as small as possible to leave as much agricultural as possible, but I don't know his intent.
Yeah, no, I mean, there is a clear right of way left?
Yeah.
Which is 50 feet, right?
Yeah. So if you definitely get tractors, any kind of farm equipment?
Yes, yes, but this is even bigger than a normal road.
Yeah.
So it actually leaves some questions. Should we actually, do you have any option of actually having the gentleman to come and explain to us?
Yeah, so you can, I mean, usually during a public presentation, the applicant is invited as part of it. I would say a little bit about the planning, municipal plan, that kind of stuff, but yeah, you can certainly invite him.
Yeah, no, I...
That would be part of the public presentation, would...
No, before I actually go through, I think that before we go through, what you're asking here, you're asking for...
Public presentation.
You are asking for a public presentation?
Of the proposal, yes.
So essentially, we have to...
Set a date for a public presentation.
Public presentation.
And this would be on the municipal plan portion, so this would just be focusing on the municipal plan. This is what's igniting this public presentation, so we would then have to, I believe, do another public presentation of rezoning?
Yeah, you'd have to do, like we did tonight, we did a public hearing.
Yes.
So you'd have to do that as well for the municipal plan amendment and the zoning bylaw amendment. And this is really, I mean, this is before you do any readings of anything. So a public, it is a formal requirement of the Community Planning Act that when you're amending a municipal plan or creating one, you do a public presentation before the use of Prac, before the public hearing. Really, it's kind of the first time the public sees it, and the applicant would come and make a presentation. And so I wouldn't say that council is really committing to anything by setting the date for it, except saying you want more information about it.
Correct.
Any questions?
So we have to set a date that's 14...
It's 10 to 14 days from when you advertise it, so reasonably, I could send Jason the announcement tomorrow. I think you could do it on the same day as the municipal plan presentation, if you decide to do that.
Can I ask you, what are the rules for incursion of urban development onto farmland?
There are really, I mean, there's the municipal plan, which talks about, there's a policy there, discourage rezoning lands used for agriculture or resource-based industries for other land use. And the majority of the land is being left for agriculture, so that's not really about land next to it. When there are intensive livestock operations, the province has requirements for how close the agriculture operations could be to other residential development, but...
So what you are telling me here is that the only way that somebody can defend against incursions of urban development onto the farmland is to actually intensify animal cultivation?
Well, I mean, the municipal plan itself is, you know, he has to go through this process, right? So council, you're in control of that. You're controlling whether or not the residential development is going closer. You can say no. It's...
The livestock portion is only, that only would include the province if there's a livestock element to this. There's no livestock element, so we wouldn't include the province on this file.
Well, disagree whether or not the roosters of...
That's a rooster of the neighbor. This property where the proposal is, the only agriculture land that's, work that's being done is hay collection, so there's no actual livestock on the property.
Correct, but this is, so it's a farmland next to an existing farm operation? Correct?
Yeah, but what's being proposed here on the property does not include livestock on the property, so...
Correct. All I'm saying is essentially a proposal to modify a farm-zoned land which exists next to an existing farm operation, and essentially move homes, move homes within 20 feet from someone who's actually exercising farming there.
Yeah, so one-fourth of this property will be, is the request for the proposal is to take one-fourth of this property and take it out of agriculture and put it towards residential. That's what this proposal is.
Well, let me try to understand. He does not propose any buffer between his new subdivision and the existing, oops, no care. Are there any requirements for having a buffer between an existing farming operation?
I think if it was a new farming operation going next to residential development, then there would be requirements for buffering, but it doesn't go the other way around. So if the new development is residential, that's considered as intensive than the agricultural, so there wouldn't be any requirement. But there, because there's a rezoning, council can put conditions on this, so you wanted to require buffering to, you know, prevent future land use conflicts? Ideally, if this becomes residential, anybody moving in would know, I'm living next to a farm?
Well, no, I'm serious. I should not be just washing our heads. I'm asking common sense questions, okay? Here is a case where there is a person who is operating a 200-year farm?
Yeah.
And she has animals, and somebody's coming in and says, you know, I'm gonna change the zoning of this portion.
Well, that's council, council changes the zoning, so it's up to you. If you don't want to change it, don't change it.
Why are you talking to us today?
I am talking to you.
I'm saying, you have a proposal, right? So you clear that proposal and you bring it to us?
Yeah, so...
So you do not act in any ways as advising the council that this one here may require some buffering?
Well, it's so early in the stages that I don't know a whole lot about the proposal. The guy still needs to come and make a public presentation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
To us and the public in the area.
He's right now just asking permission for council to make, have a date for a public presentation, is that correct?
Any questions?
Likely with 10 to 14 days, we're looking at July 27th, which is a Wednesday.
Can we go the next week, please? Because I will not be...
We've got the timeline, 10 to 14 days.
It's 10 to 14 days from whenever you announce it, so if you decide to make it on the 27th, then just make sure you put an announcement on the website.
All I'm saying is that, you know, I know that several people who may be interested to be there, they will not be available for that period. If you have to hold it in the first week of August, for example, when we should be announcing it?
We could do August, I mean, the first is a holiday, second's Tuesday, the third is a Wednesday.
Okay, so, anybody has a problem with that? Okay, so let's...
August the 3rd?
Yes, August, yeah.
So just have a motion of council to set the date.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Well, one of us was...
Would you want it the other way?
It's okay, I'll take any combination. On your favor?
Aye.
And... We are at item 9F. F? F, yes, correct. Update on municipal plan by law, 24B, and setting date of public presentation, another public presentation. Wow. So...
Worship, so this is for 25, it would be 25 dash, 24 dash C, 24 dash C. I know in the draft it'll show 88, but it would be 24 dash C. So this would be the municipal plan, draft has been distributed to council, so we'd be looking at setting up a public presentation of the municipal plan. So we should try to do something 10 to 14 as well.
Can you have them on both the same night, or is that...
Too much.
Well, if we're gonna go through the municipal plan, how long do you think typically this presentation is?
Through the municipal plan, I mean, we'd want to go, you know, we're not going to go through every single policy. We'll sort of talk broadly about... to go through every single policy, we'll sort of talk broadly about kind of bigger directions that it's going in, and then if there are questions on specific policies or proposals, we can answer those. I would say fifteen to twenty minutes.
So the presentations from Service Commission would be about fifteen minutes?
For the municipal plan, for the big municipal plan, yes.
For the big municipal plan, I'm talking about the big municipal plan. So we can essentially schedule them, the one after the other, first the big one, because this is the big picture, and then we can put the other one.
August 3rd?
Yes.
Just need a motion.
So I will need a motion for August 3rd for the municipal plan presentation.
I make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, correspondence, letter from Mr. Alan Holmes, use of the town St. George logo. Jason?
Thank you, worship, so correspondence letter received from Mr. Alan Holmes, June the 13th, and in which he was just wondering about the use of the town logo, which is the town logo that much we have, for use of, he'd like to, perhaps, I was just reading a proportion of what his letter says there, perhaps this commemoration could also include coffee mugs, keychains, I'm not sure if he's inquiring whether he wants to do this, or whether he is recommending the town create these things, and I guess arise from such a private, enterprise might be used, might be used to cover the cost or some charitable purpose, so...
Second?
So money from such enterprise could be used to cover the cost or for some charitable purpose, so again, I'm not sure if he's saying he wants to do that or he's recommending the town. So we, typically, we will do buttons and coasters and things like that over time, but we don't go through and generally just have a bunch of merchandise with town logos, that's not the business that we're in, so, so if it's a request for him to use it, or another entity to use our logo...
Or for everyone in the world.
Or just to throw it out in the world and say you can use the town.
Or just to say, St. George, community strong.
Yes, I mean...
And I just want to actually, if we can inform the council that there is a company who's actually doing the thing right now, like every Christmas, we're getting a flyer or anything that somebody can buy posters or with a thing, so...
Destination art, are you talking about destination?
There is a, I don't know if there are seal screens or what they are, seal screen prints of this.
Destination art, what they have for St. George, they have a sort of an artistic rendering of the gorge that they have, saying town of St. George, but they don't, they don't actually use the logo or the crest or anything like that, so I'm not sure if Mr. Holmes is looking to say, look, I'd like to, you know, suggest that to use the logo, and I guess he's in regards to this where he says the seventeen ninety logo, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but, you know, both the logo, the official logo and then the crest and the logo that we have, you know, those are logos of the entity, so we don't just freely say, anybody can, you know, take the logo and make shirts, or...
It's pretty black. No, I'm a bit confused, this crest?
Logo.
This is a logo?
Yes.
And what's the crest?
Crest would be, yes, the things that are on top of the bylaw.
I thought that was a seal.
Crest, seal, yeah.
Crest and seal is the same thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There's really only one seal, and that's what we have for an official seal in the town.
So this is the logo?
This is the logo.
The logo is community strong, have we copyrighted that?
Have we, like officially licensed of cooperating?
Have we copyrighted the community strong, for example?
The saying, no, we've not...
We do not, so anybody can put...
Anyone can put a community is strong on a t-shirt, yes, the logos, the seal, the crest, that's, those are properties of the town.
Wait, I'm sorry?
The logos and the crest and the seal are properties of the town, so...
I'm not sure if the thing that this company that you mentioned advertises, if it is exactly that one, because I remember it was that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure then what that would be referring to. I guess if anyone is using the town logo or crest or seal without authorized use, I mean, that would not be correct.
I have information that I have received, and it's up to, for you to check it, is that we never pay the artist who did that, and somehow he got an unofficial thing that you can actually produce art, so essentially there is someone out there who actually sells merchandise with a logo. So if that is the case, the question is that after we disappear, and after the town disappears, if I read Mr. Holmes' letter correct, it says, can anybody print t-shirts with that?
So all crest, logos and seals of this entity, Town of St. George, Village of Black's Harbor, will move to the new entity of Eastern Charlotte, so...
Have you registered this?
Have we registered the crest?
The crest, or the logo.
The crest is, our seal is, so, the logo, I mean, when you're saying register, I don't know where you're asking us to register, like is it...
There is a federal register where you register logos.
As of right now, I don't know. I mean, I guess the fact is, do we have to go and register that? I'm not sure.
So if it is not registered, it's free for all?
I guess that would be something that would have to be decided perhaps by not by me.
Can we get some input from someone who knows about trademarks and these things?
Certainly we can, I mean, it's, ask legal advice, I can certainly request that if we address the council.
I think we need to clarify what Alan Holmes is asking. I think that was, that's really the first problem, is we don't know, does he want to do this, or does he expect us to do this?
I don't think he expects anything from us. Essentially, what he wants to know is that he step on anyone's toes, if he actually prints one hundred t-shirts that says, St. George community strong, and gives them to his fifty grandchildren. That is how I read it.
Doesn't say that, though.
No, I agree completely.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
Wants us to do it.
I think we need some clarity.
Okay, so can you please...
Ask Mr. Holmes what he wants, if he wants to do it or he expects the town to do it.
So can leave the subject by actually tabling it or differing it until Jason can bring us some additional information.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Public presentations and appearances, we have several people today, anybody who wants to raise hands, or who wants to make, we have one, two, three, three, so we have three presentations, one at a time, I guess that you can, do you want, yeah, Joseph, by all means, stand first. If you want, you can actually stand. I think so.
I was told that last week, people couldn't hear me speak.
No, no, I was behind, but yeah, go ahead.
Hello? Is this on?
Yes, actually, yeah, it is primarily for the video camera, but we can hear it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Town Councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm opposed to the use of Quad NP members riding on Riverview Avenue and Main Street for the following reasons. First and foremost is the safety of residents and ATV riders. All-terrain vehicles are not designed for paved roads. They are not subject to the same rigorous safety standards required for cars. Design features such as solid rear axles and low tire air pressure make them vulnerable for the loss of control or rollovers on paved roads. There are no turn signals on ATVs. Councilors, would you drive a car on an ATV trail? The answer is no, because cars are not designed to ride on uneven terrain, and it is illegal to drive cars on ATV trails. Manufacturers have a warning label on each ATV, do not use on paved roads. Quad NP is asking council to ignore the reasons Transport Canada and the NB Department of Transport banned ATVs from public roads. They seem to say, trust us, we are safe, and that is not realistic. ATV is a, safety is a personal and sentimental concern for me. I used to work at the True North Salmon Factory in St. George. A young man, Todd, who also worked at True North, died in an ATV accident. It was psychologically devastating to employees. He did not expect to die driving ATV, but he did. Similarly, accidents could happen with potentially hundreds of ATVs driving down Riverview Avenue. Riverview Avenue by my house is a dangerous road, especially with a blind hill just above my house. Many times, when crossing Riverview Avenue to see my brother-in-law Teddy Vale, I almost got hit by a speeding car. I nearly get hit by speeding cars now as I mow my front lawn. In nineteen seventy-two, Phil Hawker's mother was killed in a car accident at the top of the blind hill. There are many speeding ATVs now on Riverview Avenue. I am concerned that I might get hit by speeding ATV. One of my neighbors, matter of fact, said he's concerned his grandchildren will get hit by a speeding ATV. Also, a slow-moving ATV might get hit by a speeding car at the bottom of the hill. Councilors, please do not expose residents to potential hazards or accidents for both residents and ATV drivers that do not exist now. The Quad NP speaker said speed enforcement and route path compliance will be done by the RCMP. This is pure fantasy. There are twelve RCMP officers in the St. George detachment, six of them are always on leave. We cannot get the RCMP now to put a speed trap on Riverview Avenue. RCMP's officers are not allowed to pursue ATV drivers. The second reason is the effects of the quality of life on residents. My wife and I moved to St. George from St. Catherine's, Ontario, in part to escape the traffic congestion and noise. We like the peace and serenity on Riverview Avenue. Approval of this proposal will result in large number of ATV drivers using the road, especially on weekends, because Quad NP is requesting the use of the street as a managed ATV trail. This will create noise and possible traffic congestion. The Quad NP speaker downplayed the severity of the noise from the ATV, saying it lasts thirty seconds. When I'm having a nap, I don't care if the noise from an ATV lasts two seconds or two minutes, I will wake up. With groups of riders traveling on this proposed trail, the noise could last all day long. From my experience living in other towns in Canada and USA, approval of this request will have unintended consequences, such as ATV riders that are not Quad NP members using all the streets in St. George, which will affect the peace and serenity of the town. Counselors, I did a survey, which I've given out to you, of the residents that live on Riverview Avenue, eighteen of the residents have said they're opposed to having ATVs on Riverview Avenue. Two of the residents were for it, and there's four houses that I was not able to reach, and one of them had a for-sale sign, and one appeared to be vacant, so this is the majority of the residents that live on the affected portion of the route. And there's one other thing I want to add that's not in my notes, is that, is that Quad NP made a big deal about other towns in New Brunswick that have allowed ATVs on their streets. Those towns have different circumstances that we have here in St. George. For example, most towns only approved ATV usage for limited circumstances, such as getting gas or getting food. So our situation here is different in St. George. Please do not be swayed by the argument that just because it's used elsewhere, it can be used here. I spoke to the mayor of St. Stephen last Friday. He said the town does not currently allow ATVs. He would only allow ATV usage with strict limitations, such as access only to gas stations. The town gets a lot of complaints from, about ATVs driving on their streets. Unfortunately, I was not able to speak to the mayor of St. Andrews prior to this meeting. The town clerk, Paul Knopper, said that in October twenty-twenty, town council had a first reading of a bylaw which stated that ATVs were not allowed on town roads except for specific circumstances. The bylaw was not taken up by the new council. Approving this council will negatively, sorry, approving this proposal will negatively impact our lives and others living on Riverview Avenue and expose residents to potential safety hazards. Counselors, your primary concern and consideration should be to the residents of this town who are taxpayers and not to Quad NP, which is a well-financed special interest group. Please do not approve this proposal. In the very least, if council is going to pass a bylaw accepting the Quad NP proposal, make it a pilot project, so that town residents, Quad NP, and RCMP will report back after one year to review how the bylaw was implemented, regulated, and followed. This will obtain feedback from all stakeholders and will allow future council members to make amendments if necessary. Having said the above, I have one final point. Members of council, if you go to Quad NP, click on the About Us tab, you will read the following heading. Quad NP's principal mandate is to manage all ATV and side-by-side trails in New Brunswick. In the Quad NP proposal, they're requesting that their members be allowed to ride on Riverview Avenue from the Well Pump House to Main Street and onto the tunnel under the highway. Essentially, they are stating that this will be an all-terrain managed trail under Quad NP jurisdiction. I have enclosed for your consideration a copy of the Off-Road Vehicle Act. Section seven point nine one, Schedule one point one of the Off-Road Vehicle Act states that an all-terrain vehicle managed trail must be within twenty-five meters of a private residence unless the trail manager first obtains the written or verbal consent of the person entitled to withhold consent with respect to the land on which the private residence is situated. At the front door of my house is approximately five meters from the proposed Quad NP managed ATV trail. My wife and I will not be granting consent to Quad NP to use Riverview Avenue as a managed ATV trail. This means that even if the town and province approves the Quad NP proposal, I and others that have homes that are less than twenty-five meters have a legal right to prevent Quad NP members from using Riverview Avenue as an ATV managed trail. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Joseph. Who is the second one? You want some water? You want some water?
Excuse me?
You want some water?
No, I think I'm driving through more minutes. My name is Glenn Larson, and I think I know most of you.
Yes, we know you.
But I've been a resident of St. George since, I'll go to eighty-three. But I've been a resident of St. George since, oh, about 83. Been working here since '76, and been in Charlotte County since '72, as a prosecutor, defense lawyer, so on and so forth. Had a little bit of experience with ATVs in court, and courts get aggravated every time I see one of them. But we all have different interests, so I have to respect what some people like to do and maybe what I don't enjoy, but I enjoy other things. So, when I was here the other night, I tried to sit and keep an open mind and listen to both sides. There was no doubt in my mind that all the people that sat here who bought into the Quad, they're responsible people, law-abiding, and they're not going to cause any aggravation to most of us. There was a bunch of other people at the back who were heckling and didn't respect the other interests of people. And we know all the people that had the frustrations, whether it is for Riverview Avenue, whether it's Mrs. Southard or Main Street, that's really the big problem. And then the presenter, I have to respect his views, but my view, being a bit blunt, it was a bit of a snow job. Now, the first thing that struck me, I don't know whether I got the numbers right, but was it 34 million or 37 million that the municipality would benefit? I should have stood up and asked him to break that down. That's a bit of a... That's a joke. So, you come in on the Quad, you get to the tunnel, you might be able to rent a room at the Granite Town, park it there. Where else are you going to spend money in St. George? You're not going to buy gas, you're not going to buy groceries unless you walk somewhere. So, in my view, what the presenter wants, I mean, they've got this vision that they should be able to travel all over New Brunswick, and that's great, that sounds like a good adventure. But that's not, I think, the obligation that you folks have to the citizens. And in my view, there's an obligation to the citizens, but there's not an obligation to this Quad group. Now, once they get into town, where are they going to go? They're going to turn around and go back, because you can't travel up through the woods. You can't get beyond, what, the pump house? The old railway track? You can't get across up at Bonney River, because there's no bridge? You can't get down to Black's Harbor? I don't know where that's... How he's going to get down to Black's Harbor? That's a bit astounding. So, I had some concern, and then about enforcement. Again, I don't want to be blunt, but that's a joke. Now, a few days before the meeting you had, I happened to be at a doctor's office in St. John, and I met an RCMP officer there that I hadn't seen for a couple of years, but somebody that I'd worked with as a prosecutor and a defense lawyer for 12 years. I got a lot of respect for the man. And we were talking about the old days, when the court used to be down here. But in that conversation, he said, "We don't have enough members." He was talking about how short-staffed they are. So, with all due respect to this presenter, who says, "You know, we've got four means of enforcement," that is never going to happen. That is never going to happen. So, I just think that you should consider whether you have an obligation to this Quad group or you have an obligation to the citizens. And leaving it at that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Thank you. And those were the good days when there was a court in St. George.
As you know, I attended the meeting the other night, and it was a good meeting, got a little emotional at times, of course, and you had two groups, one group for and one group against. But they did talk about, in your flyer, Jason, that you delivered to the house, you talked about the Quad New Brunswick wanted to connect two trails, and that's why they made an application or interest to open up Main Street and Riverview Avenue to connect these two trails. Now, what I heard the other night, there's no trail to connect. They do not have the right or the permission to use the trail above that pump house. And they said, "Once we get the permission from St. George to use the street, then they're going to apply to get a permission." That's how I understood it. Correct me if I'm wrong, yes. Now, I'm sure most of those guys were responsible. There were older folks, some of them, and some of them are driving $40,000 side-by-sides. And I'm sure that most of them are responsible, but you get irresponsible drivers. From Friday night to Sunday, I worked around the house. Over 100 ATVs went up and down Riverview Avenue. Over 100! And it's illegal to drive an ATV on a street in St. George. I never saw an RCMP officer, but more than 100 went on that street. Now, I was able to get a lot of pictures, and I did clock some of them over 100 kilometers per hour, but a lot of them I couldn't get the pictures, only because they're going so fast, and I couldn't get my phone turned on fast enough, and they just whizzed by. We know who they are. You know, Jason, you said to me, "I know who they are. If we know who they are, they're the irresponsible drivers, why can't we do something about it?" The other thing is, once you, you know, once you provide approval for off-road vehicles to operate on our streets, or those two streets, or whatever streets, how do we prevent irresponsible drivers to operate on them? I'll tell you, and how do we prevent young kids from driving them? When they got a helmet on, flying by at 80 kilometers per hour, you don't know if they're 12 years old or 15 years old. That's the seriousness of it. I mean, you can't... Are you going to sit up down the tunnel and say, "Only Quad New Brunswick drivers are allowed"? Who's going to do that? These are facts. And who will provide the necessary policing and the enforcement to make sure residents are looked after? It's a... I mean, we're not getting policing and enforcement now for various reasons, if it's shortage of people or RCMP people or whoever, but we're not getting policing now. And what will be the complaint procedure? Will they call the town? Because RCMP's not taking any complaints about them. So, is it they call the mayor or the councilors or the CAO? What will be the policing, the complaint procedure on speeding and noise? That's the two big ones. What... And what is... I agree with Glenn. What is the true value of the economic benefit to the town? There's no gas station on Main Street or Riverview Avenue, and there's no restaurant on Main Street or Riverview Avenue where these things are going to travel. So, if the Granite Town Hotel gets 100 rooms a year from these ATV club, let's just call it 100 rooms times $100, that's $10,000. That's real. And if an accident occurs, and it's going to happen, because in front of my house, the way some of those guys drive, and it's not just the ATV drivers, it's the car traffic. Some of that car traffic comes screaming down by, and they're going to clip somebody. Some guy's going to pull on the driveway or whatever, and they're going to clip an ATV. If an ATV is clipped or an ATV loses control, goes on the sidewalk and kills somebody, a child, are you taking responsibility? Because the town, the province of New Brunswick has washed their hands. They say, "Listen, guys, they're illegal to use in New Brunswick. They're illegal to use on our highway system." Canada says that. Transport Canada, they're illegal to use. Don't change their mind. However, if the town wants to give permission for political reasons or whatever, you guys are going to take the responsibility. So, who will be financially and legally responsible if there's an accident or when there's going to be an accident? So, thank you.
Any other member of the public has any statements? So, we come to the item 13, which states by council. And we'll start from my right.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and giving us your views, and it gives us all something to think about, and that's all I have to say.
In regards to the ATVs, even if the bylaw is passed, if the Quad of New Brunswick does not have the trail extended, the bylaw not being enforced, it will not take place. They've already said, "The trail will not open." So, it's a catch-22. You have one place to get to the other. If you don't get to the other, you don't start from the start. That's the way I understood it, although it wasn't made clear the other night, but we did present it before, that's what they told us.
We'll comment. Oh, fun days, just the usual. Just the usual. July 18th to the 24th, we have information going out almost daily on our St. Georgetown website. We've put out flyers. There is going to be some changes. Sunday afternoon, there will not be a Y Field Day, but there will be three different musical groups. And when I said picnic in the park, I didn't mean it was in the park. I meant that it was at the McAdavic Place. And in our flyer, it says, "All events, unless otherwise stated, will be held here at the McAdavic Place." So, I encourage everybody to come, have a great time, bring your chair, bring a blanket, sit down and enjoy yourself. And Consular Rubin is going to do the hot dogs. He promised me he would, right?
Yep.
And that's all I got to say.
Leslie, what's that from you?
I do have something tonight. On Tuesday night, we had a public hearing that was held here at the McAdavic Center. And the purpose of that meeting was to hear the proposal from Quad NB and to have members of the community give their views. And it was about the request to use Main Street and Riverview Avenue for the Quads. There were several individuals who had the courage to stand up and present their views and ask questions, just so they could be clear in what it was that they were actually being asked to give. Unfortunately, there were members of both the community and our council who sought fit to heckle, shout out against these people who just simply tried to be, quite frankly, deserved to be heard. Just because they maybe couldn't articulate or fully understand the request, this right was stolen from them. Now, I strongly believe that those of us who have the privilege to hold positions of authority are held to a higher standard, and I strongly believe that we didn't honor that. There were shouts, they were laughed at, criticism, downright disrespect shown towards those who tried to voice their concerns. These individuals were belittled and went away feeling as if they weren't even heard. I am requesting a letter of apology from the council to be sent to these individuals. Mrs. Southard, Stephen Swimm, Joe, I can't pronounce your name, I'm sorry, and David Armstrong.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Consular Datarakis.
So, I want to thank Mr. Larson and Mr. Armstrong, and is it Magenti? Magen... Oh, he left. Okay, he left.
Joseph.
Joseph, Mr. Joseph, for the public presentation. Personally, I think that the recent open house discussion with Quad NB is a great example of how important it is to hear thoughts and questions and concerns from the community regarding new projects. After all, that's why we're here, to represent our community. True democracy occurs where everyone feels comfortable to let their voice be heard, and I truly enjoy being a part of that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Change the subject a little bit. I'd like to publicly congratulate Jason on being appointed to the CAO for the new Eastern Charlotte entity. And it was so nice to see a good crowd turn out for the Pride Parade, particularly Kathy Barkus of St. Croix-Malayan, Robert Govan for coming, and lovely to see all the veterans who showed up for Canada the Day. It might not have been a big crowd, it was great that we actually had the veterans come out and help us raise the flag and celebrate. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm going to start by saying that all presentations today, they were very emotional, because all the people have... They did not make a marketing statement. They live and they have real concerns. And I share some of your views about what has happened in the meeting here, because I have... I don't know if any... I did not see any council or heckling. No, I'm sorry. But I have seen... I heard heckling happening, only on one side, and I felt uncomfortable about that, by being listening there. It is important to know that this discussion is happening while St. George has seven council members on the table dealing with an issue. And come five months from now, there will be only one person who will actually have a voice from St. George, from this path, from the tunnel to the Riverview. So, regardless of which way of the argument you are, it's important to note that right now, we have seven people who live in St. George and several who are actually living in Riverview Avenue and Main Street. Anyone lives? No, but at least we all have seven in Riverview Avenue. So, I just want the St. George residents to actually contemplate what is... What would be... What can be the difference when essentially that decision about St. George roads may be, at the end, decided by people who do not even live in St. George? I want to share about the comment that the deputy mayor made about the Pride Parade. It was a very emotional event. It was one who was long overdue, because Fandy High School has taught us a few things about the tragedies that can happen if we are not a community. And I'm really glad that this thing happens in St. George in that magnitude and that support. It actually made it to the St. George St. Croix carrier in the last thing. It was on the last page. On the first page, the big news was, "We have a big cat litter in St. George." I don't know if you noticed about that yet, but on the last page, it made the Pride Parade. So, I'm really proud of this thing. And I just want to say, I became emotionally in this meeting, particularly with the item that was parachuted in the agenda. I don't know how it happened, Jason. I don't want to see a thing like that happening again, because it really flustered me to actually see something like that happening without anyone having a previous notice or at least talking to his neighbors. So, thank you all for coming today, and if there are any other comments to be raised, I always rely on that. Thank you.